So why, why did you decide to run again?
Well, it, it, it really kinda all started with Buddy Choak. Uh, we eat breakfast together a lot on Saturday mornings and, and we have a long time before either one of us had ever been elected to office. So this has been going on for a long time. But anyway, one day he asked me if I would serve on planning and zoning board again. Uh, and it was kinda put to me like, I'm gonna put you on the, on the agenda to vote. You're not given a choice. And so, and so anyway, uh, I said, yeah, I'd be happy to do it. And so I have been on there for, I don't even know, I lose track of time, eight, nine, 10 months now. It wasn't but a like, I guess a month after that, that he asked if I would also serve on the design review. And I don't know if you remember this Gary, but actually I had started it, uh, oh God, what, 20 years ago or so?
Something like that, yeah.
And, uh, and so, um, I had done both of those before. Uh, in the role as the liaison for the city council. Um, uh, having served, I guess between what, 96 and 2012, four terms, but, um, anyway, and, and I guess Buddy was thinking, you know what, I bet he's gonna get the bug again. And he was right. I did. And, um, and quite frankly, there's some things, uh, that need to be taken care of, you know, for the city. Uh, the, uh, the, the last time anybody dove into the, the planning zoning book itself was when I was on there along with Jane Bailey and Lynn Porter. It was, some things changed and rewritten at that time and subdivision regulations have, have not, anything has not taken place for the last 20 years and, and some things need to change. And, and if you want to interject questions anytime, you know, I can get cranked up here as you can see. I could probably talk for the solid hour without asking any questions, but, um, the, uh, uh, what, what happens more often than not, and, and a lot of people that live in Trustful know that there are, and I hate to say it this way, but I'm gonna call a spade a spade. And that is, there has been some, what I wanna call, sub housing built, for better lack of a word. Some that, a lot of people in Trustful might not be proud to be in the city. Um, uh, you know, some of these houses are just outside and, you know, they met on the bottom to the ground. Uh, and, uh, and I could actually tell you where some of these houses are, but, you know, most people that live here know.
I got some guesses, yes.
Yeah. And it bothers me. Uh, and, and, and what happens is, is when you're on planning zoning or city council or any of these boards or councils or whatever committees, uh, and I hate to say it this way, but sometimes, uh, a lot of the members, they, they'll come to the meeting and they're tired. Just like any human, you know, we got, we all get tired. And, and sometimes not enough questions are asked because you're looking at the agenda thinking, what time are we gonna get out of here tonight? I'm not saying that should be the case. It should never be the case, but that is the case sometimes. And so bottom line is, is where I'm going with this is, is that these, like in the case that I just brought up with planning zoning and subdivision regs, all the questions that you would want to ask, they should be in the subdivision regs, for example, so that you don't have to ask it. It should be something that's required. Something that you're gonna ask for, so that you don't have to remember to ask for it. Uh, and so that everybody that's coming into the city to develop and build will know by just reading the subdivision regs or the P and Z book, what's required of them. And so it makes the job a lot more, a lot easier, uh, when you go to these meetings and, and I'm not saying the goal should be easier, uh, but it, but it should always be for the betterment of Trustful. And I think that, well, I know that every one of these need to be tackled in this next administration. And I have already brought all of these things that I'm telling you about now up to our planning and zoning commission and a lot of our council people. And so, you know, I would go as far as to say, you know, of course, we're having this interview because I'm running for place one on Trustful City Council. Uh, but even if I'm not elected, I would ask, uh, even the person I'm running against, hey, you know, I'll help you any way I can. I want to help this city. And so I would even ask to be back on P and Z if for no other reason to help rewrite these so that the city can move forward and I think in a better way.
Right. Why, uh, when you were on it 96 to 2012, were you place one then?
I was.
Is that why you chose place one, just to run for the same place again?
Well, yes, and because I still have two or 300 signs in the garage.
You don't have to reprint?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I wondered how that worked, like with the various people running, since Trustful's not like districts or whatever, like you can, you know, up until June whatever, when you qualify, you know, you can change it and all of that. You can just pick a spot. So I've, I've wondered why people choose certain spots and stuff.
Well, sometimes it's because you want to run against a particular person. In this case, that's, that's not the case. Uh, I had already decided, uh, what place I was gonna run in. Uh, well, it was a foregone conclusion as far as I was concerned because I had all these signs. Uh, but anyway.
I got you. I got you. Did you, when did, so you said 96 to 2012, and I, I thought some of those last few years, uh, covering you guys, but when, when did you last run? Did you run in 16, eight and 20, or what?
No, 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 I did not. I didn't run. Uh, I didn't run for anything. Uh, I set it out and, uh, uh, you know, quite frankly, um, I had kinda come to the conclusion that, you know, I was just gonna ride off into the sunset until I got the bug again. And, uh, uh, I always enjoyed, um, and got a great deal of satisfaction as, as being able to just, uh, try to help the people of Trustful and to serve them. Um, uh, you know, it's, uh, some people might say it's a thankless job, but I don't look at it that way. Uh, uh, I really don't. It, I gained a lot of satisfaction in, in trying to make Trustful a better place.
Yeah. What, what gave you, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna expand on that just a little. I think Trustful's a great place and always have, uh, uh, but, you know, we should all be striving for, uh, better than where we are now today.
What gave you that, that bug again? Was it just Buddy asking you to, to run and, or like, was that something that just kinda pushed you over the edge? Like you were already thinking about it and then when he asked, you did it or what?
No, no, he didn't ask me to run for city council, but he did ask me if I wanted to be on, you know, the P and Z board again and also design review. And yes, that did give me the bug.
Okay. Why didn't he want you back?
Yeah, just getting, just getting involved again, you know, and, uh, and, and hopefully having some good effect on the direction that city's moving in.
Why did he wanna put you back on P and Z? You said he like almost, it wasn't even like, he didn't even really ask. It was just kinda like, you know, like, hey, I, I want you to do this. Well, is it just cause y'all are, y'all have been buds for so long? Or does you got the experience or what?
Well, I, I, I don't necessarily think that it had much to do with us being buds for so long. I think it had more to do with the experience because when I was on city council before, uh, I think two, maybe three of those terms, I was liaison to P and Z. And like I say, started the design review committee. So that, I always had my toe dipped in that bucket. And, um, and so, yeah, I had a lot of experience there and I, I guess he wanted to put it to use. Um, actually Wayne Sullivan had retired from the city and that was what you wanna call the mayor's, uh, the mayor gets to put one person, uh, that he picks to be on a P and Z board. And, and I was his person after Wayne Sullivan retired.
Okay. One way into another.
That's exactly right.
What is, what, what is, I mean, it's, I can't remember when, when you announced, but what's the, are there any differences running the last time you ran versus running now? Or is it still pretty much the same process?
Well, I mean, you know, there are, there are of course some changes. Uh, you know, a lot more stuff's done on the computer now as compared to when I run before. Uh, filing your econo- economic interest report, for example, and, you know, uh, but, uh, everything else is pretty much the same. It's meeting people. It's, you know, uh, making decisions in a group setting and, uh, uh, like I say, just always striving to make Trustful a better place.
Yeah. Speaking of that, what are like, I guess like if you're elected, how, how do you go about making Trustful a better place? Like what are, what are the, what are the goals? What are some of the issues facing the city that, that need to be kinda tackled early?
Well, like I say, I've already mentioned a couple, you know, subdivision regs. They desperately need, uh, to be rewritten and the P and Z book. Uh, also the last time a, uh, the master plan was tackled was 20 years ago also. Uh, and whether most people know this or not, that was when I was in office, we tackled it. Uh, and it hasn't been tackled since. But by state, uh, law, cities are supposed to keep a master plan updated every five years. And so that needs to be done urgently. And I still remember the last time we did it. We had a a big who do out at the Girl Scout camp for two days and we, we locked ourselves up so that we could, uh, in earnest, do everything that we felt needed to be done on that master plan. And, you know, it's, it's not always hard and fast, but it does give you guidelines to follow as people are coming here to develop property. You know, it may have a set zoning in place or, uh, it might not even have that zoning, but during that master plan, you may have on the master plan that that's what this needs to be zoned because that's what everybody feels like it needs to be in order to be the best it can for Trustful.
Yeah.
If any of that makes any sense.
It does. What, like with the subdivision regulations and then like the master plan, like needing updates, like, get, get in the, get in the weeds with me a little bit. Like what, what kinds of, like we're, we're, we don't have to like call out like a neighborhood or something like that, but like,
Yeah, yeah.
But like what, what kinds of changes need to happen? Is it just 20 years ago, stuff is now outdated and there's, you know, hey, it was this, now it needs to be that? Like what, what are some of the specifics?
Yeah, and that would be the case. Uh, it's no different. And, and Deerfoot Parkway, for example.
Yeah.
I can remember back, um, that, uh, you know, the city bought, I think close to 1,500 acres uh, right off the interstate there, nearly across from Husky Parkway. Um, and so the city owns it now. But at one time, there was some people that wanted to put a subdivision there and then it was gonna be, uh, commercial. Uh, all right. So what does it really need to be now? Uh, uh, you know, that's, and that would go for that whole quarter. Quarter. And, uh, the, uh, the, I remember, uh, I'm going back. I'm, I'm getting my thoughts together here, Garrett. The,
Yeah.
Uh, uh, before Pinnacle was built, uh, Bear Company, uh, who developed and built, uh, the summit. Uh, Jeffrey Bear and David Silverstein are the two partners there. But, uh, I remember them coming out here and, and we met with them. Uh, they wanted to put Summit Two out there. Uh, which might be a good fit, uh, but that's the, some of the things that need to be discussed. Uh, but at that time, uh, uh, Colonial Properties, which was also developing a lot of property out here, Walmart, Sam's, Home Depot site and the Pinnacle. Well, they brought Pinnacle to us, uh, and said, look, we've got all the same players that will go into this site right now. Uh, and we, we wrestled back and forth, well, do we want a mall back up on top of that hill? Uh, so we went to David Silverstein and Jeffrey Bear and asked them about the Deerfoot property and said, when do y'all want to actually build Summit Two out there? Wayne, it's a long time coming. Said, uh, there's not enough rooftops out there, uh, to support it. Which it would be a regional mall, but it still just wasn't dense enough in their eyes, like it is around the summit, you know, off 280. And, and so we had made that decision then to go ahead and build a Pinnacle. Uh, of course, Parisian was a player then, which I still wish it were a player. Uh, that was one of my favorite stores, you know, but, uh, needless to say, there's, you know, that whole quarter needs to be looked at, um, uh, to decide, you know, what needs to be done Deerfoot Parkway. There's still a lot of land to develop out there.
Okay.
Uh, there's still a lot of land to develop. You know, uh, how about Glendale Farms, which was just, you know, as being sold as we speak. Uh,
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of, yeah, a lot out Highway 11.
I drive past Glendale Farms every day. Uh, can we, can we just keep it a farm? It's the best view that's left in Trustful.
Well, I,
Let's leave it alone.
I, I agree with you, uh, that of, of course, you know, that was Richard Beard's dream that owned it all. Uh, originally he, uh, he wanted, to begin with, uh, he wanted Auburn University to have that, that property. Uh, and, um, and to keep it ag. Uh, uh, and then, uh, he, after, he couldn't make that happen during his lifetime. Uh, he actually tried to see if Trustful would buy it and turn it into a park and, um, you know, um, that's an expensive piece of property for a park, but, um, uh, but anyway, uh, we'll see where that goes, you know?
Well, we could, we, we could, we could still use, uh, enough green spaces, especially out that, that side. To, to use your phrase, there, there's a lot of rooftops out there. So, you know, I'm one of those rooftops down, down that way. So,
I got you. I got you.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a cool, uh, it's like one of the last remaining like original landscapes, I guess you would say, you know, because there is, there is so much development and, you know, it, it does feel like, other than Glendale, you, you tell me what you think. Uh, you know, Trustful's very like, I'm not gonna say like Mountain Brook, but like, we have, we have our very defined borders all the way around. And it feels like, it feels like Deerfoot Parkway is kinda that last piece that has kind of expansive room to do whatever.
Yeah. And, you know, and that's the thing that anybody who's in office, office that, that, that they wrestle with, uh, and that is, uh, the continuing development of vacant property. I mean, because a lot of them, let's face it, a lot of people that live here, you know, after they move in, they want you to roll up the streets and not develop anymore. And I understand that. Uh, you know, I grew up here in Trustful and graduated from Hewitt Trustful in 78 and I think there was what, 3,500 people that lived here then and one red light, one flashing light. I mean, I'm going on and on and, and, uh, and believe me, I loved Trustful then. Uh, but, you know, there is such a thing as, that's called property rights. And, uh, and so all you can really do over the long haul is try to develop plans so that it develops in the very best way possible. Um, and, um, sometimes that becomes difficult, but, uh, you know, you've got to try to do it, uh, for the betterment of Trustful.
How, how diff- how, I wanna, I'll, I'll interject just to ask this on, on that point. How difficult is it to, like, like when you're developing something, you know, the best way, you know, that you know how for whatever you want Trustful to be now, or do you want it to be 20 years from now, whatever? When, uh, when you have to like, in some cases, deal with, you know, whether it be federal or like Aldott where you, you know, the whole, the whole deal around here is like, man, there's just so much traffic, but it's like a state road or something like that and your hands are kinda tied? How hard is it to like, develop something while not having much control over making it where it doesn't get completely congested once it is developed? Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, you know, that's something you wrestle with all the time, uh, you know, congestion and, um, they, uh, you know, I hear it all the time. Oh, Trustful's getting like 280. Well, you know, it's pretty bad. Uh, but first of all, Highway 11 between 459 and downtown is not really, but what? One mile, mile and a half or whatever it is. Where 280 is what, five, six, seven, eight miles that, that, that stretch from say the summit to Double Oak Mountain.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's, you know, three lanes across and it's a parking lot when, you know, it's five o'clock. And, but I understand Trustful can get backed up too.
It does.
And, and, and you've got to be cognizant of that and you gotta, you gotta continually strive to put the infrastructure in place. It's, it's no different than, you know, we put the turn lane in for Parkway Drive. Uh, that, that helped. Uh, uh, also, uh, and most of the right of ways already there. And if you look, uh, you can see it. And that is from, you know, the Cohaba River, uh, going north up 11, uh, past Trustful Springs and, you know, it's, it's two lane. Now there's a turn lane down at Trustful Springs, the new opening, new entrance. Uh, but like I say, the right of way is already there for four lane or five lanes with, you know, with a suicide lane down the middle. But, uh, uh, but that's money. And, you know, and, and hopefully as a lot of this stuff is developing that, that we can get state DOT, which that is state highway onboard, uh, maybe find some funding from the state, maybe the feds even in order to get that done. Uh, hopefully even past Deerfoot, you know? At, at one time I remember when Charles McPherson located behind Amarex, McPherson Oil. Uh, he wa- he was gonna help fund it if he could get the other half funded and we, and, and it couldn't get funded at that time. And so we would've had that stretch done. Uh, you know, that's a big F though, but,
Yeah.
All, all this stuff keeps popping up my head, things that I remember, you know, um,
Well, it's funny, like, I'm trying to remember what it was about. It was about Highway 11. But like doing so much history research over the years, like I'll come across, you know, old newspaper articles that are like talking about, you know, the future widening of Highway 11 or adding a turn lane or whatever it might be. And I'm looking at it and I'm like, well, this newspaper's dated 1962 and, and, and here we are still, still the same. It's like, the, the wheels of the, of the state or federal government turn slowly.
Well, and, and to your point, speaking of federal funding, I, and I can't remember exactly the exact year, Gary, but the Green Waste Project that everybody knows about. Uh, we actually won a grant and it was, I still remember it was Clean Air Money Grant is what it was called, uh, for $2 million from the feds. Uh, that was to start the Green Waste Project. If, if everybody only knew all the red tape that you have to go through,
Yeah.
Uh, believe me, uh, it will, it would literally blow your mind, uh, just to get to spend that money. By the time you get to spend it, the project that was gonna cost $2 million ends up costing four.
Yep.
True story. And, and so, but a lot of the green waste is done. That's, you know, that's the sidewalks that meander down the Cohaba River, goes over, you know, goes over to the park and, but, and, and we're still adding to that Green Waste Project. Uh, uh, the, you know, the utilities is about to redo the utilities board building and also the cities, they're, they're all involved in redoing the city jail and all this. It's going to look great. I know that pictures have been on the Trustful Tribune webpage and, uh, but they look great. And, um, but they're adding to the Green Waste Project. And, and eventually what I would, this part's not on there yet, but I wanna see if we can get this added to it. Get it, well, first of all, let me just finish. The Green Waste now is going to go uh, through the city complex where the utilities is headed down towards Entertainment District and it'll go down Pink's Gut Creek.
Along Railroad Avenue, right?
That's correct. That is correct. Well, I'd like to also see it go the other way through Trustful Springs and head back all the way down to Deerfoot. Uh, and that's, that, that is, you know, a drain that I have in order to see if we can get that added to the Green Waste Project.
To Deerfoot, like, like just to the, like the intersection where Deerfoot then crosses over to Camp Coleman? Or like to actually, it crosses over the road, Highway 11 to Deerfoot?
Yeah, actually cross over to Deerfoot, make, uh, bicycle lanes and stuff, uh, because all that's going to get wide and that's a county project. It's, it's not widely known, but there's, there's a project on the books uh, to expand all that, uh, and hopefully put bike lanes and all kinds of stuff. But, uh, and maybe, and part of the Roadmaster Plan is to also connect Camp Coleman to Popstone Circle.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Uh, the city back during my term, uh, we bought the connection at Popstone Circle so that we could connect it at some point. We, we're gonna have to fill in some gaps and buy some more land.
I was gonna say, like, how, how much of that land between, you know, you're, you're cutting that like almost 45 degree angle from Popstone, what, behind River Crest? Through the woods all the way to Camp Coleman. How much land would y'all have to acquire?
Uh, I don't know the exact acreage on that, uh, Gary, but, it is. It is a good bit. But if you, if you look at it the way Crow flies, pull it up on the tax map and look at it. Not as, it's not really quite as bad as you think. They're closer, they're closer than most people think.
City's gonna have to get some mo- some more money.
Yes, they are. Which that brings up another question, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
I knew, I, why'd I know that you were gonna go there?
I mean, that's been, that's been the whole deal of the last, oh gosh, what, over the last year, I guess, or so where it's been, you know, the, the, the financial stuff has been a, has been a big, the big deal around here, I guess.
It has. And, uh, all I, uh, let, let me just say this. Um, and I am proud of this fact and that is the four terms that I served, uh, we always run a balanced budget. Uh, and, and I've heard this and I've seen it. I have not interjected anything online. Uh, but I will interject it here on, on our, I guess, we're gonna call this a podcast.
Podcast. Welcome to the new, welcome to the podcast world, Wayne.
Oh, golly. I, I feel like I'm advancing here, but,
There you go.
I'm getting in the new digital age. Uh,
That's right.
But, but, uh, the, like I say, we, all 16 years I was on there, we balanced the budget. Uh, everybody that I worked with, they were all great. Uh, they, um, uh, the unbeknownst to a lot of people, uh, that you, you're hearing say, well, they need to do, uh, uh, you know, uh, somebody needs to come in and look at the books and, you know, uh, uh, but that's done every year. Uh, uh, they get a financial report every year. Uh, and it was always positive when I was in there. You know, they had a little shortfall. Um, I know, well, it's really not little, what, $2 million shortfall this last year. Excuse me. I have, I have looked at the new budget, uh, and, uh, to my surprise, you know, there's about 10 more line items in the budget than there were when I was in there. So, I'm, I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just, I just, just facts. I noticed that, you know, it's what, a $52 million budget and, and there are a lot of things in that budget that really hasn't changed. The police is still has the biggest budget. Fire department has second biggest budget. I can go on and on. Uh, you know, there's 75 police now, or there was 50 when I left office. There's 50 firemen now roughly. Uh, where I think there was 25 full-time when I left office. We still had, we still had a, uh, part-time fire department back then that unpaid.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, but anyway, you know, the city's growing. All the departments are growing. I understand that. Um, the, um, you know, the, the one thing that, uh, and, and this reared its head before I left office, but not to the extent that it is now, and that is, uh, you know, and, and I'm not picking on my neighbors here across, uh, next door to me. Uh, but they have Amazon, you know, pull up nearly every afternoon.
Yeah.
And it's, and a lot of other neighbors through here do too, and, uh.
Yeah.
I, I'm guilty of ordering through Amazon myself and I like eBay. I like eBay, I like eBay too. Uh, but, uh, that is not helping our brick and mortar buildings out here. Um, and, uh, and so, but what happens is, is, uh, through state law, Alabama state law, now they're collecting eight percent, uh, from, from say, I'm, I'm just, I'll just pick on Amazon. They're the biggest. Uh, they're collecting eight percent from Amazon. Well, that means we're in the minus column automatically. Because, uh, if a brick and mortar building, we collect ten. So the first four of that eight goes to the state. The next two goes to the county. That only leaves us two, which means we miss out on two. That means also the school that gets one penny of our four on a brick and mortar sale, they don't, the school's not getting that either. So both the city and the school is suffering from missing out on those Amazon sales. Now, uh, and I just had this conversation with Shell, Shell, uh, Shell Nut, our state rep, uh, just the other day. Uh, you know, how do we solve this? And we didn't get into all the nuts and bolts and the details of how to solve it, but, uh, and I have not spoken with Danny Garrett, our state rep either, uh, that lives here in Trussell. Uh, but, you know, it needs to be looked at and needs to be addressed, uh, because that, that in essence was our shortfall last year. Now, did we know it before last year? Yeah. Like I say, we started seeing signs of it before I left office. Uh, but it needs to be addressed.
Do you think, what, do, do you think on that point, let, let me ask you this, like, I'm not a numbers guy. I'm a, I'm a letters and a words guy, so I don't know. But like, how much can you look ahead? Like you mentioned, like you kinda saw it starting as, as you left office. Is there like a, hey, we maybe need to rein in some spending a little bit because we're seeing this shortfall start to uptick or? I don't know. Does that make sense?
Yes. It, it's, it's no different, uh, our family budget. You know, it, you know, if you make two thousand dollars a month, I'm just gonna throw, pick a number. You make two thousand dollars a month, your family budget. Well, we know that we don't need to be spending two, over two thousand dollars a month, don't we? But probably, really it needs to be a lot less and here's the reason why. It's also state law, uh, to run a balanced budget. Now, there are a lot of cities, municipalities and townships that don't. I understand that. But it's still state law. No different than it's state law, uh, to do the five-year master plan, have it updated every five years. Uh, and so, but it's state law to run a balanced budget. It, it's state law where, if I remember correctly, that you're supposed to run a five percent reserve.
Oh, wow.
And so five percent of fifty-two millions, what?
Not a numbers guy. I need a calculator.
Well, it, uh, you know,
Let's see.
That, that, uh, we're, we're about it. We're about at that five percent reserve right now. So we're still considered by state law in good shape. About what, two and a half million, a little over that?
Let's see, uh, five percent of.
Fifty-two million, what, about two point five, two point six?
Yeah, two point six.
That's about where we are. Well, uh, when I left office, there was a little over nine million dollars, um, in the reserve fund, um.
Oh, wow.
And, um, you know, uh, and I'm not, I, I am not throwing stones at this mayor and council. Uh, you know, I, I know they bought Glendale Farms. Uh, I think it was four million dollars roughly. Uh, they bought seventy-five acres on Service Road, uh, for five million dollars. I understand why they did it too, you know, um. Uh, that was a tough decision to make. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that I wouldn't have made the same decision. Uh, they were trying to keep, uh, five hundred apartments out, but actually it was not in the city limits of Trussell. That was why they were able to build, if they could, their apartments. It was in unincorporated Jefferson County.
Right.
But, uh, they were wanting to put five hundred apartments there. They would have been surrounded by Trussell. Uh, it would, they would have, uh, clogged up Service Road to no end. Now, there, there are a lot of things that the city could do to try to stall it, you know, keep them from doing it. You know, would they, I can go on. Could they have gotten, uh, fire service? That's the first thing you ask. Trussell wasn't gonna provide it. So then they would have probably gone to Center Point, asked them to cross, to cross over Trussell boundary lines in order to service it. Not saying that they would have done it and probably they might not have. But they could go to Argo and ask. That happened to us when we were there. Uh, a developer actually told Argo, they would buy them a new ladder truck if they'd cross over all lines to develop a piece of property that's on Deerfoot Parkway Zone for apartments. It's in unincorporated Jefferson County to this day. And so I can go on and on about this, about decisions that have been made. Uh, like I say, I don't know that I would have made any different decision. Uh, I do know that, uh, the city needs to work hard this, this, this next term, uh, to balance the budget, do whatever it takes. Uh, if that means calling the department heads and asking them, where can we cut? You know, we may have to slow down growth just a little bit in order to catch our breath. Um, but, uh, we do need to balance the budget. We do need to replenish the reserves. Uh, I, I can go on and on why you need those reserves. One reason, people, well, I'm sure remember if they've been around Trussell a long time, the tornado come through. Tore up Pilgrim's Rest out there on Deerfoot Park.
Yeah.
Well, we were probably, knock on wood, one of the best at cleaning up the best all around here. And the reason why is we had the money in the reserve fund. It's what it's really for, an emergency fund.
Yeah.
We, we spent nearly two million dollars. We had it cleaned up, liquidly split, uh, trying to put those people's lives back together. And, and, and I'll use this analogy. What if a tornado come through tomorrow? And ripped away Walmart. What, what do you think the sales tax revenue is from Walmart?
A lot.
I know. And so if, 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 if a tornado tore through there and tore that whole mall down, that would be a lot of sales tax revenue. This city wouldn't see. You've got to be prepared for what you don't see. You know, you can't always, cause you, you know, it, like I say, it's, it's things you don't see. But, uh, you know, try to be prepared for them. And that's what I would hope to bring to the city is to help try to do that.
Yeah. It seems like just in that, that financial regard, you know, whoever's elected mayor and the, the, the five people that are elected to this council, they've, they've got a very, may, maybe some of the most serious years, uh, ahead of them compared to maybe some of these past, uh, administrations. Like it seems like there's a lot of tough decisions and tough work ahead for this next group.
I don't disagree with you. Not at all.
Man. I wanted to show you this. You remember our conversation a couple of years ago when I was starting on a book?
I do. I, I remember two or three conversations we've had.
Yeah, like, cause, well, so I'll just like put it on a tee here. Uh, you know, like, when you, was that, was it two thousand and one that you, Gene Melton and was it John Garrison went to the National Archives?
That, that is correct. We went up there twice, actually. Uh, yeah, Gene Melton, he got on to me cause I was wanting to spend all my time in the National Archives, reading all the documents, documents that we were making copies of to bring back.
Yeah. Well, I've, I've spent several years in those, in those binders of archives and everywhere else and it's done.
Oh, I can't hardly see it.
I know. Well, it'll be out, it'll be out July eighth.
Oh, golly.
That's a big, that's a big book.
Hey, do I get a signed copy?
You do if you got twenty bucks.
Well, I got the twenty bucks for you.
No, I, I, I finally finished it. It took forever. Um, but.
That's great.
I've, uh, it'll be out, uh, July eighth, all about. Uh, I mean, you know, it's, it's ninety-eight percent Cohaba Project history and the other two percent is kind of how that really helped form what we know as all of Trussell, you know, since they were kinda separate until nineteen forty-seven, so.
That is, that's correct. That is correct.
That, that thing's, that thing is done now. So I wanted, I wanted to ask you here, like the, you know, you've been here a long time. What, what is the history here? Cause I've, since we've last talked or whatever, you know, like the, like in a setting like this, an interview type setting, the, I, I've learned a crap ton more about the history here, uh, well, how would you characterize Trussell's history? Cause it's, it's, it's pretty deep and it's pretty rich.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you can, you can start with Mr. Trust who's buried in the cemetery across from City Hall, uh, uh, you know, Trussell was actually founded, as you well know, in the early eighteen hundreds and, and, um, um, you know, Civil War come through, you know all about that. This ammunition storehouse for the rebels was down there where Braden's used to be on the corner and, um, you know, and, um, city leaders, uh, well, actually then you moved at the project, uh, if I remember correctly, uh, and you probably were, since you just wrote this, may remember more of it than me. There was four of these WPA projects that were planned at that time in this general area around Birmingham. Palmerdale, Mount Olive.
Palmerdale, Mount Olive, uh, Trussells and, uh, was it Bankhead?
I think so. I think it was. But, uh, and ours is one that really took off, uh, uh, to the extent that it did, uh, a lot of it was because we had a railhead here. Easy to own offload and, uh, but, uh, you know, I've got pictures. I'm sure there's probably some in the book of the project before the government ever got involved and bought the property, just farmland with cows and a few trees, not many. Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's interesting to look at that, to see what it was then and to see what it is now. Uh, and, uh, or to see what it was after it was built in, you know, the late thirties. Uh, and it, and, and you're probably going there with this podcast that we're doing and, you know, how it's evolved. Uh, and, um, and it's gonna continue to evolve just like most things do, not all things, but most things and the, you know, our project, um, you know, I look fondly back on all of Trussell back in those days, you know, as we start to get older, uh, no different myself. Like I say, having graduated in seventy-eight, uh, that's a, you know, I reminisce a lot like a lot of folks and, uh, that was, um, I have a lot of good memories of the old high school where I used to hang out the window on the top floor. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, all that to say this is, you know, uh, moving forward, uh, back when I was on the council, uh, Jane Bailey, uh, uh, and myself and Lynn Porter, uh, we, we did a lot of work in trying to get the project on the National Historical Register.
Right.
And, uh, and it is, as everybody knows. Uh, the project as a whole is, but the, the, uh, the houses are not the structures and, and the reason for it.
They're listed, they're listed as contributing resources on the National Register.
That's right. But, but they couldn't be added to each individual one because there had been too many alterations already at that time, what we were told. Now you may know something different, but, uh.
Well, I'm just curious, what would define a contributing resource to its, uh, listing, like, because the national, like, to me, looking at like the form that, uh, from the Department of Interior, it's like, I remember this cause I wrote this part, but it's like forty-seven pages and it lists every home and whether, you know, it kind of describes it, you know, as, you know, uh, the sh- whatever, the shingles or the windows and all these different things and its size, bedroom, bathroom, all those things. And it'll say if it's contributing resource or non-contributing. Because there were some built later, like in the fifties and stuff, like Al Brentwood and stuff like that. Um, but like.
There was actually, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I was just like, what, what then? If, if they're not, like, what, what does it matter then if they're contributing or non-contribu- like, to me, contributing would mean they contribute toward that history because it's not, to me, it's not, is the, is the land quote unquote historic or whatever? Sure, they chose it, but it's the WPA labor that constructed these houses that is also to me more historic. That was, that's what put the people to work. So I see contributing resource as those homes, those homes are historic.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could splash those words a little bit, contributing resource. Well, they have to be a contributing resource because the houses that were built, they were, they were the project really, uh, and, uh, but you can go, you can go to other National Historical Register sites where the structures themselves are on the site, uh, and not just that particular plot of land. Um, the, I, I can only tell you what we were told at the time that we were going through all this based on, based on the way I remembered, okay? Um, that was probably, oh, oh God, that was more than twenty years ago, I think.
Yup. Cause like it got on the register in oh six, but y'all started that process in like oh two or something, if I remember right.
Oh, yeah. That was a long drawn out process without a doubt. Uh, but anyway, it's, it, this, you know, it's a cherished subdivision. It's a cherished project. It's a cherished area of Trussell without a doubt. Uh, a lot of what Trussell is today is because of the project with, and, and that's without a doubt also in my mind.
Yeah. No, I agree. Like I, I forget, well, I know who I was talking to. I won't say his name just in case he doesn't want it on here or something, but like,
Yeah.
He, he kinda described the project and you know, obviously Trussell has gotten, it's gone like this, right? Like it's just got bigger and bigger and expanded.
That's right.
But like, it's still kind of that, that center of town and he kinda described it as like kind of the hub, right? And everything else in Trussell is a spoke on that hub, you know, that kind of branches off from it.
Wouldn't disagree with that at all. Good analogy.
I, I was just shocked like, like doing more and more research into this place, just how, you know, like grow, I didn't grow up in the project, but I grew up in Trussell and you know, you, you know, there's a, there's a very defined sense of place when, when you're in there, you know, like, you're like, this is, this is, this is different. This is different from this spot or that spot or whatever. Um, but like, talking to people who live in other New Deal communities, you know, Greendale, uh, Wisconsin or some people, uh, that I talked to in Greenbelt, Maryland, uh, theirs is certainly different cause there was, I think, still a co-op type living situation, but, uh, and not necessarily private homes or whatever, but like seeing how many homes there were, how they were built, how the, uh, how the area, uh, was constructed, not just the homes and the no economy of labor and they're, you know, the houses were built like tanks is, is what I was told, but the way the streets are all interconnected, you know, there's, there's not a circle. You can get anywhere you want. You can get in and out of everywhere. Um, like, kind of the line I've told everybody is what I learned is like, it's not, it's not just a unique place to just Trussell or to just Jefferson County or really to just Alabama. It's kind of unique in the country. And, um, I think that's something that, man, I, I, I've seen certainly an uptick in people, uh, I don't know, I don't know how to word it, but I've, I've seen an uptick in people the last few years really appreciating that, I guess you would say, that like, oh, we've, we've got something this unique right here in our city.
Well, let me ask you this. Uh,
Yeah.
I'm sure that you did an awful lot of research for this book. Uh, something that I remember gathering out of all that I read when we were up at the National Archives is that, and I don't know that this is the case with some of these other WPA projects. I know somebody that. I know somebody that went to the one, for example, that you mentioned in Wisconsin. I think that's close to the Green Bay Packers.
Probably so, yeah.
Yeah, uh, uh, I'm not gonna mention his name, but I know somebody that played for the Packers has told me about, uh, that subdivision too. He said, it's so much like this project down here.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, you know, we have the mall. Uh, a lot of this was designed after Washington DC. And a lot of people don't realize that.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, looking straight ahead at the high school. Uh, and this is something that I think, but I don't know this for sure. It's just like the light that hangs down on the front porch of the school, which is now Kahaba School for Kids, you know, elementary school. But, uh, that was supposed to be just like the one at the White House. I think it has changed. It's supposed to be on it to hold it in place. Uh, just like the White House. Uh, but, uh, I, I would, I remember reading some stuff on that and I'm, I'm just curious, have you read anything? Uh, that mentions.
So I've, I've read essentially what you've said is that, that you, you know, that it was designed to kind of mirror the National Mall in, in DC and, you know, it's kind of laid out that way. And obviously we've got, uh, I mean, fewer trees than we did, but there's, there's trees that kind of somewhat block that view depending on how far back you are. Um, but, but yeah, that, you know, I, I haven't read necessarily, at least not that I can remember off the top of my head, uh, like super drilled down, down into the, uh, the light that hangs there or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I mean, I, if I did read it, um, I've probably just forgotten it. I, I've come, you know, I've come across so much these last three years, really working on this thing that, I guess, that, that, um, things, four hundred and fifty-eight pages.
Is it really?
Well, that's, that's with the bibliography, so.
That's right. That's right.
It's, it's probably more like four hundred and twenty, but,
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think I ever read that many words in high school, but, um, it's, it's long, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy. Like it's been cool to, you know, be kind of that education piece, I guess of like, hey, here's what this is, because we do have so many people now in Trustful. I mean, what are we? We're, we're probably north of thirty thousand now, I would bet, or close to it.
We're close. I think we're really about twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight.
And I know I'm getting on another, since you brought that up, uh, we actually did a study. I think it was my second term in office, um, and, uh, that study said that depending on how Trustful developed, uh, uh, we would end up with, with the boundaries that we have with thirty-five to forty thousand people.
Yeah. Like I remember, I can't remember the year, but I was talking to Buddy, this has been a couple of years and I would do a story like every year, um, you know, just kind of previewing the year ahead kind of deal. And a lot of times we would talk about development, you know, population, your key kind of stuff. And I forgot the year that he said. He might've been talking about twenty forty. We weren't talking about the twenty forty plan, but maybe we were just, that was just one of those years. And he was like, Trustful could be thirty to thirty-five thousand people then. And then like the next year when we talked, we were like, well, it could be thirty to thirty-five thousand in the next like three years, not in the next fifteen, like it was, it was like that rapid where it was like, all right, this is getting really big, uh, like maybe faster than we thought kind of deal.
Well, you know, it's, that's, that's the thing that, you know, we're not a hidden secret anymore. We, I, I used to consider us one at one time, but, uh, you know, we've, we've put things in place here that has made this a very attractive place for families to want to move. And quite frankly, that's, I think that's really what we should be after all the time. It's no different. We were talking about the project homes, uh, uh, you know, we want people as, after I'm dead and gone. I'd like to think I can look down from heaven and say, well, Trustful's still thriving. Um, you know, but you've got to have new families that want to come here and live and raise their kids and go to church and, um, uh, as long as we keep all this really good and always striving to be better, I think it'll stay that way. Uh,
Yeah.
That was why we pulled out, you know, twenty years ago and started our own school system. I happened to be on the education committee when we were looking at all this and doing a study and, uh, you know, and putting the mechanism in place, uh, the, the extra penny uh, that people are talking about now. Uh, but that was put in place then in order to save the money. Uh, uh, and we, we saved about seven million dollars, if I remember correctly, in order for Trustful to pull out. But the, the, the biggest question that was asked then, say, hey, Wayne, I'm for it. But if we're gonna do this, we don't want to do it just like we've got. If all we're gonna get is what we got now when we're pulling out, we don't need to do it. You're just duplicating expenses, you know, services. But, uh, if we're gonna do it, let's, let's strive for something better. And, and that was something, I know I'm getting on another tangent here. That's something that we started doing then on the education committee. We started bringing people in to come talk to us from other school systems that were high achievers in the state. Uh, uh, of course, most notable, I guess, is Mountain Brook. We had them over here quite a bit. Uh, what, what, and asking them, you know, what do you guys do different? That, that sets y'all apart. Well, we know they have money. Uh, that, that, that's a given, but,
Right.
Uh, but other than that, the biggest thing that I gathered out of all those meetings is expectations. You set your expectations high. If you set them really high, uh, you're bound to get good results. And, and that's what we always continuously need to be doing is setting those expectations. Uh, now, you know, reach for the stars. If you don't get there, you've probably gotten pretty high though.
Sure.
And, and my understanding is we're, we're ranked what? About number five in the state now? Somewhere in that neighborhood.
I don't even know, but probably, probably, probably in the top ten for sure.
Yeah. And so, um, you know, that's an achievement in itself and, uh, uh, nothing wrong for aiming for number one. But, you know, it's not that I think Trustful's another Mountain Brook. But by George, let me just say, there's nothing wrong with, uh, trying to emulate something that works. You don't have to always reinvent the wheel in order to have high standards and, and reach lofty goals.
No, you're exactly right. I totally agree. Let's wrap it up there. What do you think?
Sounds good.
Is this your first podcast?
It is. You're my first.
There you go. There you go. Well, hey, let me ask you this. How do people, uh, how, how will they follow your campaign and all that? I've been asking everybody that. Is it, is it the social media stuff? Is it signs? Is it your cell phone number given to twenty-eight thousand people? What, what is it?
Well, you know, I, I, I'm on Facebook and, you know, this was mentioned, of course, on Trustful Tribune and I've got it on my Facebook page, but I haven't, uh, delved into really campaigning hard yet. Not that I take it for granted, I don't. It's just this campaign season seemed to start a little earlier than most, uh, and I blame that on my friend Buddy Choak for announcing so early that, that he was not gonna seek office again, uh,
Yeah.
But, but I understand why he did it and, uh, uh, but, um, you know, uh, I, I will get out and I'll start knocking doors just like I did in the past, uh, seeing people and, uh, anybody that is watching this, uh, since I'm given the opportunity, if anybody would like to, uh, uh, talk with me, they can reach me, of course, on Facebook Messenger. Also, anybody's welcome to call my cell phone, uh, and that is two zero five nine three six five three zero two. That's two zero five nine three six five three zero two. You're welcome to call, uh, no different than when I was in office. My phone number was always public and I'm available twenty-four hours a day. So that's the way I feel about public service, uh, uh, and if given the opportunity to, to, uh, serve the good people of Trustful again, I will give it a hundred and ten percent.
You're gonna get a lot of phone calls from the, like, extended warranty for your car and stuff now.
Probably so.
That, that, that block button's really easy to push, though.
Hey, I'm already getting those, Gary.
That's funny. Well, I appreciate you doing this, Wayne.
Oh, absolutely. I've enjoyed it and, uh, uh, this is my first podcast and, uh, now this is a lot easier than I thought. So let's do it again. Let's do it again.
It's really, it's really easy, like, and it's easier for me because now I don't have to go through and like transcribe everything you said and write it into some article. I just like, here's the conversation. You can listen to it on your way to work, you know?
That's right. That's right.
It's all out there. So I've gotten lazy, but I enjoy it more. So that's what counts.
Yes, it is. It's all good, brother. I appreciate you doing this.
Yeah, no, thank you for, uh, taking the time and hopping on.
Absolutely. You take care, brother.
You do the same. Appreciate you.